She's got her voice. Welcome to the Monday meeting. Actually, it feels kind of good to get going again with the different commissioner groups sitting up here. You all noticed I got my 2025 haircut. I already got my 2026 appointment set, so good to go.
It looks good.
So we'll just head right in. Budget review.
Good morning. Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. So the first financial that we have to present to you is for community long-range planning. And this is part of building and planning. And so 2024 is a year that they really didn't have budgeted much going on as far as revenues. So they have a total revenue budget of $11,328 and they brought in $10,019. So they're slightly under budget in goods and services and then slightly over budget received more but more revenue than budgeted for miscellaneous. And this is as of December, so this is still not quite a final because we still later on I'll talk about it. We have accruals that are happening that will happen in the months of January and February that are posted back to 2024. But primarily it's finished. This will be the final, final numbers. So and on community long-range planning, that's their revenues and then on their expenditures, they have personnel is their largest expense. So it's budgeted $468,494. Their actuals is $345,536. So they're currently under budget. We still have another payroll that will be accrued back for December, for the last payroll of December. It gets paid this week. So but they'll still be under budget. And they're showing six positions and that's positions that are assigned to community long-range planning. But it's not, it's not indicative of where they actually fund those positions because they do different allocations. So that may be, I think it's less positions that are actually currently expensed to community long-range planning.
Tracy, remind me, we're due 2026?
The comp plan? Yep. And so we
Probably start probably already doing some stuff.
We are doing some stuff and then we're going to ask the board to do a variation of we of some help that can help the comp plan as well as some fire wise.
We might see this tick up a little bit because I know this thing is
It could very well tick up. We would love to have a grant to pay for a company to help us do that. But I don't know where the board stands on that. So we can bring that forward later and see where we're at. But we'd love to contract some of that out. We don't have a lot of the expertise on staff or some of the updates.
I don't, I don't think there's, well, my personal view is I, I'm careful with grants if they're, if they're telling you what kind of results they want to see in your, your plan. If they're just trying to help you get through a plan and not having expectations, you know, I can live with that, but
I appreciate that. The cities right now all have contracts with different entities or different personal services agreements with different companies for their updates because theirs are due this year.
Well, and I know around the state, a lot of places are getting help. The only good thing is we're not a growth management
Correct.
County. But I've seen some of the, through WASAC, some of the stuff that they're putting the growth manager account. I don't know how a person would get all that stuff.
I know.
It's just, it's overwhelming.
Very much so. I'm very much thankful. We're not a GMA.
On the other expenditures for community long-range planning, they have supplies and they're significantly under budget there. And then they have services for the next highest expenditure is 240, budgeted $214.50. And they're also under budget for their expenditures. Actuals are $130, $177. And this is part of the general fund. So this is a fund where you'll see the revenues do not equal expenses because they're supported by the general fund.
Most of your operations are all covered by your fees and stuff. This is a little exception to that.
Right. Yes. Part of the general fund. If there isn't any questions, I'll move on to the building and planning, which is, which is a fund that is the revenue equals the expenditures. And it's an enterprise fund. So they bring in their revenues to cover all of their own expenses. So on building and planning for this for 2024, we budgeted licenses and permits at a million 688,500. Actuals through December 30th. We brought in 1,444, 447,731. So they're slightly under budget. I looked at a trend analysis. And of course, with 2024, with interest rates going up and things like that. There, there, this is pretty much to be expected. They're slightly under budget. They had been running in 2023, a million seven. 2022, a million seven. 2021, a million three. So they're slightly off on the trend, but that's pretty much predicated on the fact that interest rates were up for 2024. So on goods and services, they were budgeted at a million, a million 308,000. They've brought in a million 149,000. So they're slightly under budgeted on this as well. The good news is on miscellaneous, which is primarily investment income. They budgeted 70,000 and they brought in 153, 198. So they're over budgeted on their revenue for miscellaneous. On their, the good news is on their expenditures. They are under budget on several categories. Personnel is their largest. They are, they were budgeted at 2, 2,199,952. Their actuals are 2,081,905. So they're, they're under budget there. And supplies were 34,000 and actuals were 14, 964. So they're under budget in that category as well. And then services, they were budgeted at 800,389. And their actuals were 708, 66 dollars. So they were under budget in that category as well. Their transfers, this has to do with an entry that relates to a reversal for a S P I D A, a subscription-based information technology arrangement that was, the entry was actually booked in 2023, but then it was reversed in 2024. So that's the only thing that looks unusual on theirs, their financial. But the good news is that their, their revenues exceeded their total expenditures. And so they're, they're in the positive as far as their operating activities.
I know we, we paid some money to be part of a, a group to help us with the technology stuff. Because the system we used, we weren't using it to the fullest this. And we're still doing that?
Acela?
Yeah.
That's not this reversal. That was from a grant. That was, the money was supposed to be, we thought it was coming in in 23 and it ended up showing up in 24.
Okay. But the stuff we're spinning on Acela, is that still working?
Yes, it is. And we keep growing the system with our GIS employee that we have and then the current programs specialist. We keep growing it and on the front of our website, we have a, a map, an interactive map, and it'll tell you who's your inspector. You can scroll like enlarge it. You can click on the red button. It'll tell you what the permit is for, what the fees were paid. So your neighbor can figure out what you're doing and why you're doing it. We get a lot of those calls. We field a lot of those calls. So it's a good tool to have. We did that in-house. Some of the other cities, Longview and Kelso both use a different software system that we do. And they had that on their front screen and I kind of yelled and screamed and said, I really want that on our system. And they made it happen. So it's really cool. It's, it's very interactive. So and it'll take you right to the permit system and you can see what, what they're doing.
And that's all I have for the financials. If there isn't any other questions, I'll turn it over to Tracy to talk about operations.
First of all, welcome, gentlemen. It's nice to have you up here. I gave you the monthly application numbers. One side's for building and one side's for planning. We keep these on our websites. We update them. We can run them at any time, but we do them at the end of the month. The first one I'll go over is the kind of maroon at the top. It's the planning applications. Just for the month, last, at the very bottom, this year, last year, this month last year. For December, we did 74 applications came in. And the current month, we only have 54. So we are slowing down a little bit, which is normal this time of year. It could be a lot of factors, but for the most part, the planning clearances is kind of what's driving. They're good for five years, but it kind of, they have to do the planning clearance before they do any other permits, just to make sure. We give them all the obstacles up in front, so they don't have any when they apply for their permit. And those are actually down for the month of December also. Last year, this time we had 40 and this time this month, this year, I can speak. We only had 16. So it is slowing down, but that's, I'm not worried. With the different president coming in, interest rates lowering, I think that we'll see some larger applications and spring will be here before you know it. Looks like spring weather out there right now, but that's our busy season from usually February through September, October is our busiest season. So we'll see. I'm hopeful that it'll, the trend will be always the same and construction season, what's dry, they build. So on the building side, the blue one. I think Mike said it best, construction is, new construction is up and the alterations are down. And alterations are anything that they need to do separately from their house or upgrades to their own house. So they're not out building something different, but our new construction is up. And keep in mind that any one of these applications and revenues can be completely, you know, obsolete if we get one large, like industrial project, it would be completely, I mean, the revenues would totally change. So we're always hopeful for a good commercial project that comes in the door. We have started doing City of Castle Rock's, all their plan review, fire review and all their building inspections. So that started about the middle of December. And we have a few a day, give or take. It's seems to be really working out right now. I know Mike's been super busy with their, being their bill, like acting building official, but they, they they needed us and we're here to help. So we can do inspections every day and I think that helped them. I think that was their biggest struggle was they were only getting one day a week.
In that situation, did we petition them or did they come to us?
They came to us. Yeah. Which was nice. So and then we also do backup for City of Kelso when they're, they only have one employee that does that work over there. And when they're out of town or on vacation, we are out of the office. We cover for them as well. And we just take a portion of their fees. They still get to remain some of, to keep some of them. And then we keep the other for, to pay for our employees for the extra work.
I, I know we have some, like in Lexington, there's, in there like a 25 unit place that's been approved.
It's larger than that.
Is it larger?
It's larger than that. We've got
On the corner, the RV.
That one is, we're waiting for some review. It's very, that RV park is very preliminary reviews. They have, they have preliminary approval, but we're waiting for the Dyking districts to sign off and give their like restrictions of what they're going to require. And so that's where it's at. I do know that.
And out past where I live, past the Castle Rock High School, that corner has been approved for, so none of those permits or things are in.
No, those will be, those will be in addition to, yes. The Lexington one hundred, hundred, hundred plus homes. If they get, yeah. And if their holdup is the connection with DOT right there by that mobile home park.
By Tim Law.
Yep.
They never got approval from DOT before they did all
And so they're really, they're, if they can get the approval, they can move forward with, they've got the sidewalks and the streets in. So
I'm gonna have to find a different route to work.
I was gonna say, you need another bridge. You might. Let's see what else. Our Building and Planning Advisory Committee meets next Tuesday at four o'clock. So that will be, we're looking forward to that. We haven't seen them for a month or a month and a half. So kind of take off where we left off with private roads and then we're going to talk about the comp plan as well. Kind of maybe pull in some of those committee members and seeing if they want to assist with some of our updates. I think it'd be nice to have them on board and get their buy-off. So have that upcoming. No planning commission for this month for January. And then on, on your agenda tomorrow, there's two, it's numbers six and seven. And they are just amendments to existing contracts we currently have in place. They're for third-party plan review. In case we get inundated, have work that we cannot do and we don't want to stop and slow down our timelines. We have these guys in our back pocket to utilize their services if needed. So it's just extending the contract for another year.
So six and seven are building
Six and seven. Yep.
Stuff. Okay.
Yep. And there's nothing out of pocket unless they do work for us. And this last year, I don't know that yeah, it's just as needed. And I, this is the Sixth Amendment. So we just, every year we do this. And that's all. Do you have anything you want to?
Anything else?
We're available for questions or comment or you guys, I used to see you here. Now it's here. It's nice to see you up there.
Get this on. This is a lot more comfortable seat than that one is.
I saw those pads are back out there.
There's a group that wants the pads up there and they bring them up. And I said, you know, Tracy's just going to send them to the back.
I always, I always move them and they bring them back up. They're just, they're really old. You don't know what's on the
Yeah.
They do. They slide around.
He's afraid of what's living in them.
There's probably some bugs.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Thank you.
Kathy, now you get to talk about yourself.
Yeah. Well, the next presentation is finance and we, we do an overview of the major funds. So we talk about general fund, roads, building and planning, which we already did, and couple, I think, mental health. But anyway. So presentation-wise, the first, the first slide is revenue versus expenses. And this is as of December 2024. And as I mentioned, this is the preliminary because we still have some accruals. So general fund shows that our revenues so far through December are 56,531,000. Our expenses year-to-date through December are 64,018,000 basically. So it's showing a deficit of a little over 7 million. But we have at least two months worth of sales tax, general sales tax revenues coming in. And that's about $2 million that hasn't been recorded yet. So that's still to be recorded and a few other accruals that will bring that deficit down. But as I had indicated, when we were talking about the 2025 budget, I do anticipate that 2024 will be at a deficit. Our revenues are less than our expenditures. About, I, I think this is going to be more like a $5 million number, not a 7 million. On County Road, so far through December, our revenues are a little over 23 million. Our expenses through December are 20 million. So again, there's some accruals of items that haven't been booked yet, but that's showing a surplus so far of a little over $3 million. Our health department is showing revenues at 3.9 million currently and expenses at 2.9 million. But they too also have some accruals. And so they're showing a surplus right now, a little over a million dollars. Building and planning is, as I indicated earlier, their revenues are at 2.7. Their expenses are at 2.6. So they're right on close to a break, a little, little bit up, up, but a break even pretty much. So
Let's go back to Health Department a little bit. How do you account? Because so much of theirs is get awarded. Just pick a number, 4 million from the state, but it's all reimbursement stuff. So is that 4 million counted into revenue? Even though we may only send in $2 million worth of reimbursement?
Right. The only, the only item that's counted in the revenue is what they've actually already submitted.
Okay.
And so they may still have a few submissions that need to be accrued. But then they may also have a
So these are actual funds that they've received then because they've
Right. Pretty much, pretty much this is cash right now.
All right.
Kathy, on the, on the general fund, have we identified where that loss is? I mean, I'm assuming it's a combination of a multiple different, you know, different categories, but do we know where the majority of it's coming from?
Well, one of the issues that we saw this year was a decline in our sales tax revenues. And so we're going to talk, I'll, I have a slide specifically on that. So our sales tax revenues are down close to a million dollars, a little less than a million dollars from what we budgeted. So that's part of that deficit as well. We're, we're, we're pretty, we'll, we'll show, I'll show you the revenues at a glance. We're good on our property taxes, which is our major revenue source. But on our sales tax, general purpose sales tax, we're, we're down from what we budgeted. And that's actually the next slide. So we have our revenues at a glance through December. And as I said, we still have some accruals that need to be booked. But the sales tax right now for 2024, basically those sales taxes that are from earnings through October. So you still have November sales tax and December's sales tax that will hit the, as an accrual. Our, our property tax for the general fund, we're pretty much right on line with what we budgeted. We budgeted 19.8 and we are at 19.5. Our sales tax, we budget 11.4 and we've brought in through October's earnings month, 8.5. And as you can see, last year for a completed year, it was 10.5. So I do anticipate we're going to be very close to our last year number. But we're going to be short on what we budgeted for revenue. So because I do believe we have about $2 million in collections for December and November. That's, that's what was typical for us. On our timber excise tax, we brought in more than we budgeted, but this is a this fluctuates from year to year. As you can see in 2023, our total for the year is a million 37,000, almost 38,000. And this year we brought in a million 30, 333,000. So some other major categories in our revenues for general fund are our HUD privileged tax. That was a little over 2 million. It's very comparable to last year, which was 2,190,000. Then these other two are smaller ones, but the marijuana excise tax and liquor excise tax. We still have, like I said, on those, we still have some more collections to come in for the month. We still have, like I said, on those, we still have some more collections to come in for the month. Accruals for November and December. But they're very com- they're, once those accruals come in, they'll be, be very comparable to last year. Um, on the general fund, our jail booking fees for all of the cities. Uh, we budgeted a million five. We've brought in a million three so far this year. We still, I believe we still have another. This December number doesn't reflect the billings that, um, will go out for the month of December. Those have to be accrued. So we should be right on track with what we, um, had for last year, or very close to budget.
Kathy, did, on that one, did we, I noticed in twenty twenty three, we, we almost doubled the budget from that. Was that just because of the revenues for that year? We tried to match that?
Yeah, we, I think they, they were being very, very conservative on what they budgeted and they're trying, we're trying to make a. Effort to make sure that what we budgeted is more reflective of actuals. And so, um. That's why the budget is a million five. Um, motor vehicle license fees, um, we budgeted eight hundred and seventy five. The good news is we brought in. Nine hundred and forty five thousand, basically. We're over what we budgeted there. Um, and we're very, uh, close, actually, we're better off than we were last year on that, that line item. And just to get additional, this is just a, um, all other, um, in the goods and services area. Um, we're a little bit over budget there. And a little bit better than the prior year. Then also show county road, uh, revenues at a glance, and as we said, they're, they're right on track with their. Revenues for their property tax. Pretty similar to the general fund. They're a little bit better than last year, um, but they're, they're a little lower than what we budgeted, so we may have over budgeted. For that line item just slightly. And timber excise tax, the good news is there that their budget was very conservative and we brought in, um. Oh, I need to look at this. Timber excise tax and road fund is exactly the same as general fund, so I may have a, I may have a problem there. I'll go back and research that.
There's different categories that make up that timber tax, and some of the, some of them were not a priority.
Yeah, we're, we're.
An oddball thing.
Yeah, we're not the highest priority schools or the number one priority in the timber excise tax. Um, and then on motor vehicle fuel tax, this is one we've been watching. You know, it's, it's, it's declining, um, and so, um, we budgeted a million nine. We brought in through December a million four. This also is one where we'll have, um, two months that are gonna be accrued. So it's, this is not a final number for that yet. So last year we had about a million six. I anticipate. Our number will come in closer to a mi- a little over a million six. And then with, this is just a, for informational purposes, we've been showing the behavioral mental health tax. This year was the last year we collected, um, on that, and that's just through March. And just as a comparison to last year, we collected two point eight million for the year, and this year we collected seven hundred and fifty two thousand. Just through March. So. I probably won't be showing this one, and there's no revenue for twenty twenty five budgeted.
At the end of this year, then we'll start looking at our two-year budget again?
Yes, we'll start, we'll start in the summer.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll do call for budget in June, July, and so we'll start working on twenty six and twenty seven budget.
I look in my little crystal ball and, and, and I'll tell you what I think I see, and you can tell me if you, you think I'm full of it. But I don't, we, we tend to be, well, we don't tend to be, if you look at the stats, we're probably the most unfriendly business state in the union right now. It keeps decreasing, and so I think some of these tax receipts, I don't see them increasing. So the only one, way to make that work is we really have to sharpen our pencils on some of the expense side. I know we have a, we have a good reserve. And, and, and so we have some to fall on, but we can't fall on it all the time, so. In my personal mind, I'm thinking this next two-year budget cycle, we really need to concentrate on the expense side, cuz I don't see the, the tax receipt side. Unless something changes in Olympia, it's not gonna change.
Yeah, and I do too, and I think that's a true picture that we're going to have to tighten our belts.
You guys think we're.
For the next, for the next budget cycle.
Those are, I'll just say upfront, those could be some hard, hard decisions. I'd much rather departments sharpen their pencil, but if it gets to. To the point and they don't. I think the three of us will have to sharpen our pencil.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz there's, there's not gonna be much growth in your sales tax. Um, and your property taxes are limited, which you can do on those anyway. Uh, the one percent, so, um, and those are your two. Major revenue sources for the general fund.
Okay, so I'll. I'm trying to tell people we're gonna look at this, so I'll just be blunt. Sharpen your pencils.
Yep.
Or we will. Okay.
Yep, I agree. Um, so on the expense side, I also have a, an expense, uh, glance for those same major funds. And it's broken into the categories of expenses, um, personnel being our largest. Um, but for the general fund, um, we had budgeted seventy four, seventy five million. In expenses, and our actuals so far through December are sixty four million. So this is a, this is a good news situation. We almost always. We, we budget as if everything is a hundred percent, all of our positions are filled. Um, and they typically aren't. So, um, you know, as you can see, we're almost ten million dollars right there, less than what we budgeted in total. So these are some of the categories. Um, we're running pretty close to what we ran in twenty twenty three. Um, our expenses on general fund ended up being sixty five million, where we had budgeted seventy four million. I, I think when everything's said and done, we still have some accruals, and like I said, one more payroll. Which is at least a million dollars right there, so we're pretty much gonna be right on track with twenty twenty three. I don't anticipate. We'll be much, um. Not significantly over on our expenses from what we, we incurred in twenty twenty three. Um, building and planning, of course, there's their, uh, their budgeted was three million. They're at two point six, as I've said before. They're, they're under, under budget, which is a good thing. Um, and then county road, their expenditure, expenditures. Uh, were budgeted at thirty three point seven million. Um, they've come in right now at twenty million. Um, but this predominantly under capital, you'll notice there's about a ten, ten million dollar difference between budget and actuals. And that's because we went ahead and budgeted for all the ARPA projects, as if we were expending all of it. Um, to make it available to, for them to have the budget capacity just in case. And so, um, they're going to, I, I don't anticipate they're going to come in, even with accruals. Uh, they're still gonna come in way under budget, and that's primarily because of that capital line. Of us anticipating. And then on the health department, um, their budget, they budgeted. Three point six million in grand total, and they're at two point nine. And their primary area where they're under budget, of course, is their personnel.
Will there be any, uh, payroll accruals that will be coming out of that?
There will, there will be some, yes. For bu- for general fund. All of these funds will have one more payroll that we'll post as an accrual.
So do you anticipate them ending up pretty close to where we were at twenty twenty three?
Um, I still think they're gonna come in less than they were in twenty twenty three. Cuz they were at three point, almost three point six million in expenses. I think they're gonna come in a little bit less. So. And then, um, the next slide wa- is a, at a glance, our property taxes, since it's one of our largest revenue streams. Um, collections. I, this was, I showed this one last month for November. I don't have the December yet. Um, should have it like this week. Um, but we, we pretty much, um, do a very good job on collection as far as property taxes. And, um, so you can see, the beginning of the year, we started off with twenty million, um, due. Twenty million, two hundred and sixty, and we, through November, we brought in nineteen million, five hundred and eighty six thousand. So. We, we do a pretty good job again, collecting all of our property taxes. I think it's about ninety nine percent. So. I'll, I'll have this as an updated slide later, once December is final. And then on, the next slide is sales tax, so you can kind of, we, we keep track of this by month and, and look at this. And as I said, we started off the year, uh, being concerned, cuz we saw a, a decrease from. Twenty four and to twenty three. Um, we did some research, and the majority of our decreases in twenty twenty four. Were due to some large construction projects, um, that were going on, that were generating sales tax on. Construction and, and equipment purchases, and that's where we saw most of the declines for our sales tax. Um, but they, they leveled off a little bit. August was not a good month. I don't, you know, typically, August is a pretty good month. It's. Back to school sales, things like that, but it was lower than the previous year. Um, and then September was pretty much even, um, so. And then October was ten percent less than the previous year. So. So we're in, we're in, we're right now at seventy five percent of our budget. I, I don't anticipate we're gonna make budget on that one, so I think we're gonna be about. Coming at about ten point five, um, so we'll be about nine hundred thousand short on budget.
Yeah.
For sales tax.
Is that something that you see? Is it a, is it a trend statewide that the sales tax is down? Do you know, or is it just because of the construction projects that we had?
Uh, when we started the, this year off, we were, I was looking at other ones, and the trend was not statewide. This was per- predominantly just our county.
And if you, if you talk to the cities, uh, Woodland and any of the cities, they'll tell you, your, your retail's. Sales tax, uh, receipts have been strong. And I think the retail for us has been strong or been on target.
Yep.
To, what we have trouble with is that constructions.
Yeah.
The new buildings, when the box plant was a big boost to us, and, but you're just not seeing other stuff coming in. Yeah. So the cities will probably have a different. Take on it.
Perspective.
Yeah.
But basically, you don't have the numbers for November and December yet?
No.
Okay.
The state's slow about.
Yeah, there's a two, two-month lag. They, um, they'll pay us for, uh, November and January. And they'll pay us for December and February. Yep, and that happens towards the end of the month after the twenty first. So if I try to pull the numbers earlier, I just, they're not there. Good news is, then we also track, uh, the next one is we track recording fees. It's not a significant revenue source for us, but. As far as the number of recording fee transactions, um, overall, um. I, we're, I were up for the year. Um, you can see we have quite a few months that we did better than previous year, particularly December. Was, uh, was the largest increase over prior year out of the whole year. So that's just the number of transactions, and then when we go to the next slide, actually is the revenues. And, um, you know, there were several months where we were down, but. In total, overall, we're pretty much up for the year and this, this revenue source. And December again was our largest increase over prior year. So.
Question on that, because Longview for a while was taking their own. So when, when Longview was taking their own, was it still included in? In the, the county total here, and then, then it was dispersed out, or was that subtracted from the, the county total?
Um, I, I don't know. I'll have to go back and look at that if the numbers are in there.
My only thought is that might show why. You know, December looked so much better than last December because.
Yeah.
Longview was taking whatever it was they, they had.
Yeah, I, I can get that information. But. Anyway, so the, that's what, when, when we do the finance, this is what we go over is some of the major areas. Um, general fund being, um, the largest, and we also look at road fund and health department. And building and planning.
I've said it before, I appreciate this report. We never used to get this, it's always.
Yeah.
I find it helpful.
Yeah, and I, and like we said, you know, keeping track of, on a monthly basis, looking at how we're doing is important because. We're budgeting. We, we're budgeting a deficit, so we need to keep, keep our pulse on that. We will be doing a, uh, for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. We typically do budget amendments quarterly, and so I'm planning on doing a budget amendment in February, the last week of February. So I'm gonna do a call to all the departments this week to say, if you have a budget, any budget amendments that you need to make. Uh, submit those, um, this, later this month, so that we can have a budget amendment and, and update. Everything for twenty twenty five in the first quarter.
Do you have any feel for what causes the big swing in recording fees from one month to the next? How we can be at ten percent less and all of a sudden twenty four, four percent positive?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know that recording fees are transactions that, that real, they're real estate transactions primarily. So.
My guess would just be in volume of what the real estate market is doing, but I don't know that for sure.
That seems like a pretty big swing from one next, one month to the next.
Yeah.
I would, I would definitely echo Chairman Dahl's, um, point about. Not necessarily expecting, or not expecting the increase in the sales tax revenue, um, when we're doing those budget amendments.
Yep.
They really need to be aware that we're. Start sharpening the pencil now. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, just, uh, can you get back to us on the one question on how that recording fee that might answer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Apparel's. Question a little bit too, if the Longview stuff was in there or not in there?
When did we start taking those in? Was it December?
I, I, you know, I'm trying to recall when, when they, they gave us the letter, we started transferring those direct to them, and then they reversed it, and it. Started coming back to us, and I, I can't tell you exactly what, how those dates were, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, we took those in, I know that we took them into consideration during one of our budget amendments. I think it was third quarter. So. And the last, the last set of financials that I have are risk management. Financials. Shelley will join me and whenever, when I'm finished with the financials, then she'll talk about. Shelley will join me and whenever when I'm finished with the financials, then she'll talk about operationally items. So on risk management, the first one is Fund 50301. And this is where risk management is a department that is a service department and bills out our other departments for their services and for all of their expenses. And so that comes under goods and services and we budgeted 2.9 million and we brought in 2.9 million basically. And miscellaneous is our investment income. And we budgeted 68,500 and brought in 80,601. So and then they have other financing sources, which are some transfers in. And so budgeted 570,000 and brought in 570,000. So on the revenue side, pretty much what we anticipated, we we brought in and that's as we do our billings to our internal service depart internal departments. On the expenditure side, the next slide. We our largest expenditure is under services. And that's because we have assessments from our Washington County's risk pool that assesses us for our liability program and our property program and a couple of other small ones, but those are the two major ones. This year they changed the way they were doing their billings. And they had been on a October 1 to September 30 billing cycle. They changed it so that they'll be similar now to what all the counties are, which is a January to December fiscal year. So we had bills that we had to pay in October that were for basically more like 18 months versus a 12 month. So again, this is one where we've paid it. It's showing as an expense under the 4.6 million dollars. But then we're going to go back and do an accrual to reverse that as a part of that's actually a 2025 expense. So that should come in at what we budgeted. Personnel is the next highest expenditure and that's 200 and we budgeted 242,000. Our actuals are 202 through December 30. And so that pretty pretty much should come in on budget. And then transfers are funds that we use to transfer to a liability claims account where we handle all of our litigation and tort claims. And so that was budgeted 212,000 and our actuals are 212,000.
Is that like a deductible?
Excuse me?
212. Is that like a deductible that we pay?
Yeah, and our liability claims, all we're paying there is the funds up to we pay for expenditures that come in from our risk pool up to our deductible.
Which is?
Which our deductible on liability claims is 100,000. And our deductible on property is 5,000. And we've had a couple of prop in 2024, we had a couple of property claims and we've had several litigation and tort claims that we're paying expenditures expenditures on. The next category is the next fund is 50401, which is industrial accident. That's the name of the fund, but it really is our workers. This is where we pay all of our workers' comp claims out of. And this too is a service department. We anticipate what our claims and our expenses are going to be for the year. And we're self insured primarily, and so we charge all of our internal, we charge all of our internal departments. So we brought we budgeted 515,000. We brought in 515,000. On miscellaneous, we budgeted 10,000 and our actuals were almost 23,000. And that's investment income on holding those funds until they're expended. So it was a good year for investment income. Expenses for this fund are primarily services and assessments. On services, we budgeted 669,000 and our actuals were 577,000. So our services, we have an excess workers' comp policy premium that we pay. It's in the range of 120,000, 130,000. And then we also have actual claims that we pay. And we also have a third party service provider that that handles our claim processing for us. And so that's all in the services line. And we also pay some quarterly assessments to L and I. But for the most part, we're self insured on our workers' comp program. And we actually were under budget, so we budgeted 669 and we only had 577,000. The next fund is liability claim is 50701. And this is the one where this one is kind of hard to budget because we don't know how much we're going to have in expenditures for those items that we will have to pay the deductible. So we brought in, as I said, we transferred from risk management's fund 212,000. And we also had miscellaneous, which this is where we got reimbursements for different claims that we that we paid out. That we that we recouped funding for expenses. And that that was primarily on the two events, the fire at the landfill. And then there was a fire at our motor pool storage facility.
The the claim that we're moving forward on the annex building sat out of here.
2025. Yeah, that'll be in and that will be in this. Yes, this.
That will have reimbursement for insurance at some point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that will also run through this account as well.
Okay.
It seems to me like budgeting with this entire department is kind of up in the air. You just make an educated guess because there's a lot of variables that are unknown.
Yep, there's a lot of unknowns. But the good news is on this one. Are we have expenses for like the repairs that we talked about that's included in this. And then we also have the expenses for that we paid to the risk pool for the deductible deductibles on torts and litigation. And we budgeted 315 and our actuals are 279,000 so far. So we're we're managing that and and monitoring it every month. That's it on the financials and then I'll turn it over to to Shelley to give you a presentation on operational.
Happy New Year and welcome new commissioners.
Thank you.
Shelley Pierce, Risk Manager and Scott Colleen is Risk Analyst passing out the presentation. And just to follow up, we also meet with our risk pool monthly and the third Thursday of every month we meet with them. So it really helps us hone in on just to kind of tune in a little bit deeper on the fund's risk management budget. So it kind of really helps us understand where we're at budget wise when we meet with them monthly. It really helps us understand our liability a little bit closer because we're meeting with them monthly. So we understand if they're going through with claims or if they're declining claims. So it lets us know our liability and what our payouts are. So meeting with them monthly helps us understand from a budget and a risk perspective too. And then I also meet with the entire commission commissioner panel quarterly so that you understand each litigation claim from a deeper perspective. So just to kind of give you guys some high level overview. So this is our January presentation. We are elated to announce the HOJ HOJ North Stairwell as of December 9th is now open for use. We appreciate everyone's patience and understanding while it was closed. So it's now officially open. We didn't have a ribbon cutting or anything, but everyone's very happy that it's open again. Our annex building, we started remediation last week. An email will be going out later on today just to set the precedence that the building is alarm has been changed, access to the building will be restricted just due to the mitigation and abatement of all the hazardous material that could be being removed from that building. We want to make sure that we know who's coming and going from that building, but all of the remediation started last week.
Shelley, do we have anybody over there? We've moved people out of there, haven't we?
No, every it's completely vacant other than the remediation company. Yeah. Everyone's over here that was over there to my understanding and COG moved out, I think close to the middle or end of December.
Okay.
Yep. And we did change with our alarm company, we changed the arm and disarm codes to the annex building, so it does have a new alarm code. And then the admin building, we tried to change the code, but due to technical difficulties, we cannot change it. So eventually at some point we will need to upgrade our alarm panel. From a safety and risk perspective, it's important that we know who's coming and going in this building. And right now we don't have that that safeguard. So at some point we'll need to upgrade our alarm panels so that we have individual alarm codes from a risk perspective. It's important that we know who's coming and going in our building. But as of now, we're having difficulties upgrading the panel and upgrading the alarm code to arm and disarm the panel.
And this is for after hours entry and exit?
Correct. Yep. Any questions so far? Okay. So I'll turn it over to Scott to talk about workers' compensation.
Hello, Scott Colleen, Risk Analyst. I will do my best to make this not too complicated. There's a lot of numbers and just different types of items in this that that can be sort of confusing. This is workers' compensation. This is for injuries related to employees at the county, which is completely different from tort claims. So this is just our workers' compensation. As of January 2nd, we have a total of eight claims. And we had closed three in December and we had one new claim open during December. On that second table, it shows that we have two claims, one from 2015, which is an agent claim and one from 2023. So six from 2024 and then two are from previous years. So a total of eight. Next slide. And this table is just to show you a comparison of years. I went back to to 2019. And it's essentially a table to show what claims are open for that year and what were closed. That very last column closed from previous years are the claims that were closed in that year from the previous year. So in 2019, they had eight closed in 2019 from previous years. 2024 had 14. I believe when I started, we actually had 19. Uh, no, I'm sorry, 16 open starting the year in 2024. So 14 of those have been closed from the previous year and we have two remaining. We had 26 open for this year. Which is almost as high as 2019. But we had also closed more than any other previous year. Any questions on this?
I know you've because we've talked about it before, you've paid a lot more attention to the closing process and and sped that up quite a quite a bit on some of this.
Yeah, a lot of the, like I said, we I came into that position with a lot of claims open for various reasons. So re-taking a look at the processes and what was missing definitely helped. So now that we only have eight starting for 2025. It would be a lot. It will be a lot easier to manage. Not having so many claims open at once. So. Uh, next A please. So we have eight, we have eight claims open right now. And how we estimate this total is actually with our third party, Everly Vivian, who handles our claims. And they have calculations in place to calculate every claim open. They all vary depending on the severity and the type of injury. And so the the estimated total column is just an estimate. I believe that this number actually will go down. Because each claim is estimated a certain reserve. And if that claim closes early or earlier, which I'm expecting a couple to do, then that estimated total should actually go down. Actual paid is what we paid so far with these claims. And estimated outstanding is what we have estimated to oh. And like I said, that's also just a an estimate because that could also change. I think in November, that total estimated outstanding was over $200,000. So it just varies depending on each claim.
Is there a a correlation to the amount of time a claim is open to what the payout is? Obviously, the the type of injury is a variable, but is there a correlation between the amount of time that it's open to the payout?
Uh, yes. The correlation, so I had calculated that 2024 was or is per claim the most expensive per year or per claim? So actually, I think I talk about that in the next slide. And I calculated about every claim open. It's about $75 a day that we pay average. Whereas previous years it was $50 a day. 2023 was 50, 2022 was 47. So you'll see in this next slide that as the years go by, insurance expenses, medical expenses typically don't go down. Unfortunately for us.
Next slide. There we go.
So here is this is kind of what I was speaking on was that in 2020, the average to close claims was 148 days. And then this last year, we had brought that number down to 104 days. As these claims stay open, they do get progressively more expensive just as how the insurance and medical costs kind of go up. So it doesn't typically mean that we are we're it doesn't typically mean that we are increasing costs per se, but just because of how medical expenses are going and how insurance is going, you want to close these claims as fast as possible. You don't want them to to keep open. And we've gotten that number down substantially.
From a customer service perspective, I hear Scott on the phone constantly following up on medical billing claims. And that's how he's got that number down substantially. From a customer service perspective, he's following up with our employees to make sure they're getting the care provided in a manner that's to their liking, that they're feeling better. I think we're both doing. I think we're both doing our part as far as following up with the employee to make sure they're feeling better, they're ready to come back. And then we're also following up with the employees manager supervisor as well. So we've, we followed a protocol to make sure that all parties are involved and that the care that they've received and that the return to work plan is in place as well. So from a customer service perspective, which I think is lost anymore, I'm really proud of us as a team that we've put together a plan to make sure that that's made a priority for Calhoun County.
And just to add that our year, our average is a little skewed. We have those two claims from 2015 and 2023 that are kind of skewing this average and we're more closer to 70 days without those two data points. And we are expecting those two to be closed out relatively shortly, actually this year. So one in February and hopefully one actually this month too.
You know, that just for information here, so they know a little bit, because I asked this question last time, was there any magic thing we changed to move from 142 to 104? And all it really was, was just paying attention, not letting it sit on the, on the desk.
Yeah.
And just paying attention and following through. And that, when I talk about, you know, when I talk about budget things and sharpening a pencil, those are the type of things that add up. And so.
Yeah.
Well, and not only is it, is it be you of us to get those claims done and close as quickly as possible based on the cost of everything going up, but I also like the customer service aspect of it. I think it's important to remember that whatever we can do to provide better service to the citizens and the employees, that's, that's our goal.
Yeah.
And I like that.
Yeah. And to speak a little bit more on that, it's not that we're trying to just push through these claims and close them as fast as possible. We've been following up and making sure that we are providing the necessary steps for the employees to actually come back to work and to return to their original position. And that could include PT surgeries, doctor visits, they will be upfront, more expensive, but in the long run, in the long-term standpoint, you're actually saving the company or sorry, organization money. So that's, we've just been pretty aggressive on trying to get the employees back as soon as possible as where we can.
Well, I'm not one for surveys, but is there a process that we have to follow up with those people to ask them what the process was like, what we can improve on from their standpoint?
Actually, no, but that's something we can definitely put in. Yeah.
I wrote it down.
This one is kind of what I was speaking on previously about our average estimated. And so I, I shouldn't change the wording on this one too. So average estimated incurred is, is just the average estimated total we have for each of these claims. So it would be like 2023 was the average estimated of what we had paid or what we owe on these claims. And in 2024, like I said, I had quite a bit open claims, aging claims that needed to get closed. We also had some severe, a few severe injuries in quarter one. So that's why that number is so high. But as you can see, as we closed more and more claims, the average for the most part decreased. And in Q4, well, probably that number will go up just because we haven't received any of those invoices. But I still think that's going to be lower than Q3. So another thing to look at is the average for each of these claims have been increasing. And we're hopeful that it doesn't come to 9,000 or 10,000 per average claim. But that's what we're just projecting, just based on what we have currently open. And again, this number could change.
Yeah. This is all based on the calculation the third party gives you?
Actually, no, this one is calculated just from data that we have.
This is actually from data. Okay.
Uh, next slide please. This is just a graph of what I was just speaking on, just to give you a better visualization, visualization on what the average is doing. So just taking that trend and just extending it. And this is to show what each department what open claims were opened in each department. And as expected, the more dangerous jobs, positions, departments have more claims. So that's to be expected. The one department that severely decreased their claims was the jail. And I am actually trying to set up a meeting with Marin to get more information on how she did that, because that's incredible.
We were going to call her this morning and say congratulations.
That's, that's really incredible to go from six to zero in just a year. So for, for the most part, this is typical, this is a typical, no one's really changed besides the jail. Eight, the Supreme Court had three claims from exposure that we had submitted. So that's why they're on there typically. They wouldn't be on there. Superior Court, I think.
That all came from that stairwell.
Correct.
Stairwell, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Any questions on this one?
Okay, next slide.
I think that's it.
So then our tort claims all wrap us up. At the beginning of December, we started with 11. And then new claims we added were one, we were able to close four tort claims in December. And then as of the end of December, we ended with eight. Out of those eight claims, we have five aging, I'm sorry, three aging claims. And then four really are, I'm sorry, three are from just the past few years. So out of those eight claims, three are really pretty old. So we're trying to really wrap those up this year. I believe three of those will be denied or we'll be wrapping those up this year. That is my hope at least. And that is our presentation for December. Or for January, but for December. Any questions?
No, looks good. Thank you.
All right.
I have a request.
Yes.
On the previous slide, the pie charts?
Yes.
For me, it would be helpful if the color code stayed the same for each year, for each department.
Sure.
Instead of changing colors back and forth.
Sure.
Just observation.
Easy change. I could do that for sure. Thank you.
Yes, good point.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, you guys. Appreciate it. We just head right into agenda items. Let me see what we got. Sheriff is on there. I don't know if it needs a ton of explanation. It looks like it's they're on there for agreements, contract, bid awards, number two and three involving the shooting range, one renewal of a contract for a person to use it. And then sublease agreement to revise section concerning occupation and use of sublet premises. We have, we have anybody from the sheriff thing? Tell me exactly what that change is, maybe? Hi, Jordan.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, Chief Attorney Deputy Jordan Spencer with the sheriff's office. You kind of cut out as I was being added to a panelist, were you asking about the change to section nine?
Is that where it is? Yeah, on item three here, Calhoun County range, sublease agreement to revise the section concerning occupation and use. Just what is that, that change?
Yeah, we updated the, or the prosecutor's office updated the language in, in section nine for us as far as using the range. What we'd like to be able to do legally is host outside training entities for law enforcement training. So if we wanted to have a, the NRA come in and teach a law enforcement class out at the range, the updated language would allow us to do that.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is it gives you the ability to host outside agencies that don't already have a contract with us?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions on that? Makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Works for me.
Thanks, Jordan. Appreciate it. Finance, you had, what do you have on here?
Hello, Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. We had an agreement with the Public Facilities District that was dated May 1st for use of rural public facilities funds. This was their financing and construction of the gateway entrance there next to the expo. And they requested, their original agreement had the project to complete by August 31st, and all they've done is ask us to amend that agreement so that they have until December 31st, 2025 to be complete. So no change in the dollar amount and just an extension of the date to be finished and fully expend those funds we've dispersed to them.
That looks like item number, number five in local agreements.
Yes.
Okay. So we're changing the completion, completion date from August to December.
To December.
That's the only change.
That's the only change. So.
Okay, any questions on that? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Oh, that, on that timber tax. Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Public Works. You guys got a list here, but it looks like you're just doing amendments for the year for a lot of the outside services you use.
Susan Eugenous County Engineer, 19 of those are extensions of temporary construction easements for the South Cloverdale Road. So that's
Item 14, basically.
14, yes. Or 12.
Is it 12 on yours?
Yeah, it's 12 on mine, 12 A through S.
Okay. You're probably off an old agenda.
Or I am, that's possible too.
And that, that's all of them?
12 A through S are all those easements extensions.
We've got them. Nobody's outstanding. We're all signed and ready to go. I know it's been a challenge on a couple.
I would say we're 95% of the way there. I think there's still one out there, but I am not positive and I forgot to check this morning. But we are good to go to construction. Where the 99% drawings and specifications are on my desk and they're with Washstop for their final approval. So as soon as we get those two approvals, we will be bringing that to call for bid.
So with all these here, we're good to go to construction?
Yes. So we have various and sundry other items. Item number one is also from Public Works. It's a call for bids for the Toodle wastewater treatment plant improvement project that will open on February 5th at 1:30. This is for an update to the treatment plant to keep it to extend its life to maintain compliance with the permits. We're replacing a bunch of interior equipment such as the oxidation ditch aerators. We're improving the chlorine tank and chemical feed systems, improving the pump state, the effluent pump station, installing a new flow meter, installation of a standby generator. This site does not have one. And we're improving the electrical system. So the engineer's estimate on this project is about $1.6 million. It's partially funded by ARPA and the remaining from the Water Sewer Capital Reserve Fund. This serves all of the people in Toodle that have sewage sewer service. That starts at about Hall Road and heads down towards South Silver Lake. Those are the customers that this will serve.
And I've, I've asked this before, but just to reiterate it, this station isn't at capacity because I know there's pressure for development out there. So this will handle.
This, this is not at capacity. That is correct.
It's, it's once it's up to date, it's good to go for growth if growth happens.
Yes.
Yeah.
We will, well, if everything goes crazy out there, we will have to expand, but right now we're good for 10, 20 years.
Do you know how much capacity out of the 100%, how much of it's used right now?
I don't know.
Okay.
It is not one of the ones approaching capacity. Woodbrook is at capacity and yeah, I think Camelot also is both right at the capacity level.
You estimate 10 to 20 years. I'm comfortable it's going to last longer than I am.
Do you want to take your two items?
So on mine, I have items eight and nine. The first one, Sean Rowey, Public Works. First one is a bid award to Ferguson and James Pipe and Supply for the purchase of culverts, bellin sections, couples and other drainage system products. This is our annual bid for culverts and pipe supplies for the roads department. We award to everyone on the list and as we need them, we select from the closest or the most low bidder at this point in time. The second one is for our equipment rentals. Once again, we award to everyone on the list. And as we need certain rental equipment, we'll pick the ones that are available at the lowest cost of the county. Any questions on those?
Yeah, real quick, on the, on the award for Ferguson and the pipe supply, do we, do we purchase like a set amount of inventory and have it on hand for specific reasons or do we wait to order as needed?
So the standard sizes we have on hand, like the 18s or 24s for more unique sizes, like say the 48 inch ones, larger, we will order those as needed. Or the kind of snap type, snap tight pipes, which are to line a culvert, if that's appropriate, we would order those as needed. Thank you.
Before I, do you have other things?
Yes, I have two more, the two motion items are Public Works.
Okay.
So the one is a little confusing, the language. So number 13 is the prospectus and local agency supplement number one for the countywide delineator project. So this will obligate the construction funding that is available from the state. So we currently have $15,000 obligated for preliminary engineering phase. And so we're adding to that an additional $170,000 for construction. So the federal obligation will be 185,000. And we're estimating the total And we're estimating the total project to be at twenty, two hundred thousand four hundred. So the remaining five hun- fifteen thousand four hundred will be road fund. The way it's written, the math doesn't work out, um, but that, that is how it breaks down. Uh, so it's fifteen, just over fifteen from the road fund, the rest is all federal funding. This is, uh, is a federal highway safety funded project. It's to reply, uh, install those white posts that you see along the road to help delineate the edge. Uh, we use those in areas where there's low traffic, um, in place of guard rail. It's a cheap, quick installation, and I live on one of the roads that they've done it, and it has made a huge difference in especially the snow and ice, because you definitely know where the edge of the pavement is. Uh, so that is a federal safety, because the goal is to keep everybody on the road. So if you can see the edge, you're much likely to, more likely to stay on the road. And the other motion item we have is a bid award for the unit price, uh, guard rail installation project. Uh, this is our project where we go through and we repair everything that has been hit over the past uh, year. Uh, we're a little behind. Um, so we are, have a quite hefty bill of the award amount would be four hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and seventy-five cents. We received four bids. Uh, the lowest bid is about a hundred and sixty thousand below the engineer's uh, estimate. Uh, we repaired the damaged, uh, rail itself, the post and the end sections. Um, and this contract is set up such that they'll do a bunch. Once the contract is signed, they'll do everything that we know of right now. And then towards the end of the year, we'll do another round under the same contract. If the contractor is amendable and the county agrees to their, uh, increases, we will, can amend it for one year to do the same type of work, so that when we have a lot of guard rail, we'll call them up, they'll come and uh, guarantee on these prices, do the guard rail repairs.
Those shiny new guard rails are like a, a light to a fly.
My husband, yeah.
You put them out there and then somebody's gonna hit them.
Wait, the last one we had, I guess about three years ago, we repaired one. Contractor went on, did a bunch of the others, and he had to go back and repair the same one because somebody hit it during that time period between when he repaired it.
I just find it quite amazing. It just amazes me.
They're shiny.
Right, they are, they.
So those are all of our agenda items for this week.
Okay. I had a, a couple of questions.
Okay.
For you, I think I sent a note to you and Mike on, uh, Wilkinson Road.
Yes.
Can you explain that one? I don't, first I'd ever heard about it.
Uh, actually, it was the first I had ever heard about it about, uh, twenty-four hours before that. Uh, Wilkinson is out in the Ariel Cougar area, so it's way off of, uh, five oh three down there. Um, it is a small road, uh, for the, as long as I ask the roads supervisors, as long as they can remember the condition it's in is what it is. So it starts off as a normal sized road, it narrows down to about they said somewhere between a twelve and fourteen foot lane with delineators along the edge. And then it widens back out. There is a steep slope that drops down to a creek. Um, it's about a sixty foot embankment. And, um, this road serves, I believe there's ten lots beyond with the narrow portion. And of those, two of the lots are owned by Pacific Core. Uh, so those two will not develop, the others are not substantial, we may end up with double the number, because they're like five to ten acre lots, so they could subdivide down to two and a half to, or five acres. So this will never be a high demand road. It is not something on the six-year plan, uh, obviously, since I hadn't heard of it either. I believe the reason it came up is just to the east of, of this lot, there's, uh, of Wilkinson, there's a small lot that has a small connection to Wilkinson that is currently subdividing. Uh, the proposal, as they've presented it for SEPA, it's in the SEPA process, uh, shows them getting access off of SR five oh three, not Wilkinson. So I'm sure that is what had prompted the person reaching out. Yes.
And, and just so I can clarify, just because it's not on a six-year plan, if something happens, it doesn't mean we don't go out and repair it.
Correct. If something happens.
Six-year plan, we're trying to identify our highest priorities, right?
Yes. We, we would guesstimate that that is a million dollar plus wall to fix that narrow section, to widen it out to, to full lanes through there.
Okay.
What, what brought this whole thing up? The narrow section?
The narrow section and the SEPA occurring. Um, because when the SEPA goes out, the neighbors are contacted, so they're concerned that there's going to be a lot more traffic on the road.
Okay.
But it sounds like that, what you're telling me is that event that created the SEPA is actually gonna access off of five oh three, not off of this road.
That is the document I saw, that they were accessing off of five oh three.
Okay. The other question I had for you, and, uh, Commissioner Farrell got a call last week from a gentleman in Riderwood complaining about log, log truck noise. And my, my thoughts on that, I said, I know we're, we're repairing a bridge, so I'm are trucks taking a different route to access, uh, up there because they can't go over that bridge?
Uh, I'm not sure. Yeah, I, I'm not aware.
No. Cause if we repair that bridge and there's more activity, there's just gonna be more. I don't know what you do with business. I mean, they're doing their jobs, but.
So that, depending on where they are, I mean, they can ask for, um, the non-compress, the compression breaks, uh, zones, um, if, but if they're on the state route, that would be something they'd need to take up on the state. But if they're on Allender, that would be something we could address.
Well, you're so close to Lewis County, we don't control anything in Lewis County.
No.
So if there are access, if it's stuff that's happening on Lewis County.
And yeah.
I believe he told me that the log trucks are originating about a mile and a half away from, uh, Riderwood in Lewis County. And then they're traversing down the hill and then through Riderwood. And it's waking him up at three thirty in the morning and log truck, and he's eighty years old and would like to get like at least ten hours sleep, but he'd settle for eight. Right now, he's not getting three, because the log tracks rolling through there on a fairly constant basis. So I suggested that he go look at Riderwood's city ordinance to see if that would help him. And that I would have to find out what the county ordinance was for whence they entered Callas County.
So if they're running down the main road through Ri- Riderwood, that is a state route. So, uh, that would be something that the state would control, um, that, so we could actually not help them unless they're on the side streets.
Yeah. I, it just raised a question in my mind, if they were acci- accessing that area that they normally would take over the bridge from a different area and coming through town, I didn't know.
And they could be. That is probably why they're coming directly through town and not, um, coming out Allender, which is much more rural, but I'm not sure.
Done, it may actually alleviate that if that's the case.
Yes. And that bridge will go out to bid in February.
With an estimated completion date of?
Um, the way we have it designed right now, it's a one construction season, so probably November, December.
Okay.
Of this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay. Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. Happy New Year, by the way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I told the others, I got my two thousand twenty-five haircut. I, I'm scheduled for twenty-six already.
And I've got, I've got the same haircut I've had for years.
Uh, I had a couple miscellaneous, uh, things if you guys want to go over. One, uh, I wanted to, and, and Kelly has started to change a little bit. If, if you, you've probably heard, there's been a couple of times, we have a lot of uh, boards and committees that volunteers sit on. And sometimes you've heard the complaints that we're not always on. They'd like us to be more on top of getting those filled and stuff.
Right.
So Kelly has put in a, a, a process, a notification process that should help some of that. And my suggestion is also, cause I still struggle with this, when I first came in, I was getting these sheets and saying, well, I don't know these people. I don't even know what this board is supposed to do. And I ask about the possibility, I would like to put it as an agenda item on our Monday meetings, that we could go over over these and do that, if you guys are okay with that.
Certain.
It might give us an idea to kind of talk about what that committee's supposed to do and who these people are.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Works for me.
Okay, we'll start, we'll start doing that, that thing next. It would, uh, help me, cause when I was first coming in, I was looking at these and I, I don't know what to do with these. Uh, I'll bring you up to speed on the, the juvenile center, you've heard me talk about it a couple of times. It, and, uh, this last year when we started working on that, the other two commissioners gave me the authority to work with that as long as I kept them up to date. And it was basically because they were in their, their last year. And, and I'm willing to do that, although I don't if somebody has a, a real, uh, desire and wants to take ownership of that, I, I don't I don't have any claims to grip it on, and I just did it because the other two were on their, their last year. I can tell you where we're at on that right at this point. We looked at, you saw us look at the juvenile center and that cost on that was pretty, pretty spendy. So the commissioner said, well, let's look at what would a freestanding be? Uh, and so we met with, uh, the same people that put together the plan for the juvenile center, and they're willing to do that for us. Uh, they've gone over to Spokane and looked at the Healing Lodge, they've gone to another place and looked at their building. I, and they gave us a proposal of what they would charge for us to give us a rendition, but, but I wasn't, I'm not willing to do that until I feel like we have a partner for running it. I don't I'm not a big fan of the county running it. I think we need a partner if, there's a lot of hoops. We'd have to, uh, where we get the money, I don't know. Maybe from the state or something. But I don't want to even go through those hoops unless I know we have a partner to run, to help run that thing. So, so the first people we, uh, tried to reach out to, and I finally got a contact, and they're interested in talking to us, it's the Callas Tribe. And, uh, Kelly and I were talking, and she's also gonna reach out to the hospital. And maybe, uh, uh, I would like to have a partner in place that would help us run that before I brought any more expense to this, this board.
This is on the mental health unit?
Yeah, this is, right now, just to back up a little bit, we send all of our, our juveniles that are in rehab or they have mental health issues. In rehab, I think there's two places in the state. I think up, up Bellingham area or in that area and over in Yakima. Mental health, there's one place, and we actually, if we don't have room there, we send them to Utah. So we're looking at, because we always have, uh, capacity in the juvenile center, can we make that work? Well, it's super, super spending. So it would be a thing to try and, uh, help kids within the Callas County. The, the, there are seven tribes to put together what they call the Healing Lodge of Spokane. And it seems to be, everything I can see about it, it seems like it's been pretty successful. And, and stuff, and so if we can make it work, I think it'd be a benefit to the, the juveniles in our, our county, instead of sending them off to a different place.
Would we end up being a facility that would take in kids from other counties also?
I, I, we could. I, I I think our priority was Callas County kids.
Right.
But if, if we have capacity, certainly, certainly, because th- now they're shipping them other places, it might be, uh, it might be a different, another option for the state to have for us to take in when the others are, are backed up.
Well, I, I, yeah, I can certainly see if Spokane or Utah are, are options right now. If we open something here, we're gonna be a target for any, anytime we have an opening, local counties are gonna want to use us rather than send them somewhere else.
So if you want me to keep moving that path, I'm more than happy to do that. I'm just telling you, I don't really
I'm, I'm good with it.
Yeah. And I just make sure we keep up to date and any, no decisions get made unless it's the three of us making that decision.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing, having personally experienced an issue with my own daughter and having a lack of facilities in this state. Um, it would be something that we, I think we should be, uh, interested in taking in other youth from the state, cause there's really nowhere for them to go. And it's another way for us to be proactive with dealing with the homeless and the substance abuse issues that we have with adults. If we can get these kids help, uh, prior to trying to help them as adults, I think, I think it's a good thing. And if, if the Indian tribe's willing to do that, or if we can pick up partners, um, I agree. I think it's, that's a third party would be the best way to do it.
Okay, so we'll just keep moving that, that path and, until we decide it's either not feasible or we can make it work.
Sure, right.
Okay. Uh, federal issues, uh, r- right now, I was once again, yeah, I kind of pretty much took the lead because the other two were here. And I can tell you the federal issues that are, have, have any of you had the chance to meet with our federal lobbyist yet? Has he contacted you?
No.
Okay, uh, I'm sure he'll do that, or David Hodges is his name, he's, he's good, and I think you'll enjoy him and, and, uh, I'll have Kelly reach out and make sure that he contacts. But what we ask him to work for on back in DC is he's working on an allocation for us for if we have to do a, a alternate road around Toodle Park Road. He's, he's helping with that. He's working on one of the charges that I asked him to work on is, uh, the core army, army the core of army engineers, their charge for the Callas and the Toodle is flood control. And that was a mandate given to them by Congress, so they concentrate on that. If you wanted to do more, you have to change that that mandate from Congress. And that's a, like a, it's not up this year, but I think it's up next year, and so I've asked him, let's start working on that. See if we can expand that a little bit beyond just the flood control, because now they just, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they just look where the dikes are. And, and so there's only three, four spots that they kind of pay attention to. There's not a lot of spots they pay attention to. Yeah.
So they're only responsible for maintaining the flood levels in Castle Rock and through Lexington in this Longview Council corridor. They go out every summer when they have the money, which was our first battle, which we've got that back in the budget. They go out every summer and they do a LiDAR of the river, so they do a river survey. And then they run their complicated river model, and they then tell us what the level of protection is in, uh, CDID one, CDID three, DID one, Lexington and Castle Rock, because those are the systems that they're responsible for maintaining a level of protection. Beyond that, they are, uh, not responsible to maintain any levels or control where the river is within the system. So all they look at is the level of protection. Um, they have started creeping up, which is why they started the design of the SRS ra- uh, rays, the sediment retention structure, uh, rays, which, uh, I believe they're finally going to go out for bid in twenty twenty-five this summer. They were, and they were delayed, and so I believe they're twenty twenty-five. So they, they look at the system as a whole, but they don't address any issues but in the core, in the locations that the, um, it's the WARA Water Resource Development Act, I believe is what WARA stands for. And Commissioner Dahl is correct, they update that every two years, and it's a big process you have to go through to get included in the WARA update.
Yeah. So that, that's the goal, is to move it beyond just the flood control to some of the erosion issues and stuff, or, or give it us some help with some of that.
This, this area is basically from the mouth of the Toodle to the mouth of the Callas?
Yes, but they look right, yeah, mouth of the Toodle to the mouth of the Callas is, uh, what they look at. They, they do like two cross-sections above the mouth and then two, like two cross-sections into the Toodle. Um, and maybe a few more into the Toodle, but that, that is what they look at. They run those cross-sections and they're, they model it through that. Um, it's a HECC program, uh, it's a longstanding program that's been modeled. It's been the standard in the industry for years. It started as HECC one, then it went HECC two, now it's HECC RAS, um, so.
So as long as we don't do another ninety-six, two, what, two five-hundred-year floods in three months? Didn't we do that in nine, ninety, some winter of ninety-six?
Yeah, yeah.
December, and then again in February, January, February, just a couple of months apart? December and then again in February, January, February, just a couple of months apart?
It was, yeah. And they, they got a lot of new data points and then they lowered what all the storm events were. So what was a hundred year event then is no longer a hundred year event. Because models, when you add more data, they constantly evolve.
So to Chairman Doll's point about us expanding the assistance from the Corps on that, if there's troubled problems now, who do we turn to outside of those designated areas?
Outside of those designated areas, it's just work that we have to, or in most cases, the property owners. Because most of the erosion on the Callits itself is on private property. It's not on, we're not losing roadways into it except Tootle Park Road. So it's not, we don't have anywhere to turn. And the, I can show you pictures, you can, I I have, went through a section of the river and I have the line marked where the bank was on the aerial from like nineteen eighty and then where it is now. And you can see how much it's moved in certain locations. But then you also have to look at it, there's an equal and opposite reaction. So if it's moved over here and taken away bank, you've aggregated on the other side. So or in the middle of the channel, depending on the location. So the, I always consider the Callis River, it's like a toddler, still doesn't know where it wants to go in a river life geology scale. Because nineteen eighty, the whole river system basically changed with the eruptions. So since that, so we're, what, forty, fifty years out almost? And so the rivers in geologic age is quite young. So it is still meandering and trying to find where it wants its stable home to be. The south portion hasn't meandered as much because of all the levees and that we make sure that we, the Dyking districts, the various Dyking districts and the Corps are responsible for it not moving through that section and protecting everything behind the levees.
Well, if they're only responsible for those certain areas, what can we do in those areas in between?
So they know that the Conservation District, the Callis Conservation District, has worked with quite a few of the property owners to reinforce their banks. There's not a whole lot we can do because it's not public property. We, as the county, we can help direct people to the right resources of who they can help and help them go through permitting. That's about all we can do.
In the riverbed itself, we can't do anything because it's, that's all Army Corps of Engineers?
Army Corps of Engineers, Washington Ecology, Washington Fish and Wildlife. So if we wanted to go out and dredge the river, we'd have to get permission from everybody.
So we're just, one of the charges I gave to our feds is we'd like to just expand that a little bit and a little more flexibility when we see these things come up. And the other thing they work on for us back there, we've worked, we continue to work with for funding for the courthouse, Hall of Justice, because that thing is at some point in time.
Right.
So I would, I would suggest, and I don't recall exactly what our budget is for commissioners. I want to save fifteen grand for for travel, but if you have to, I'll probably head back. I don't need to, I'm not interested in going back to a conference, but I'm interested in spending a couple of days with David and and talking to Army Corps and the people like I did last year. And I would suggest, I'm not, I can't force you, but I would suggest that that's probably a good thing to to do, spend a little time with David, a couple of days. And and just set that out with him on the calendar. He knows when there's good times. The, I I'm not opposed to conferences and I I went to it last year, but the trouble is you have all these people that want to go talk to them too. I'd rather go during the time when there's not everybody.
Yeah.
Wanting to talk to them, yeah.
But we can't all go at once, so.
We can't all go at once.
If you go and then two weeks later, Steve can go and two weeks later, I can go.
I I'm, I'm saying, I think, Kelly can correct me, but I think our budget is is fif- fifteen as the commissioners to to do these type of things. So you certainly have some leeway and some some funds to do that.
Yeah.
I'll have to get into the details of it.
Yeah, we'll make sure David gets with you. The other thing I want to talk about, and you probably already know this, when we 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 came out and we did a little restructure of our staff in there. Kelly's role really like, she works with me on this juvenile center. She works with me on, with David back there. She's your resource if you have a project, that's what she does. She'll, she'll help you with that and and do that. So don't be afraid to 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 work with her. She's, she's good at it and and in fact, she went back Washington DC last year just to to meet those people and get an idea of who we're dealing with, so she can help us work with them. So she's your resource there.
Okay.
Bailey, she's very good at finding this kind of stuff. So if you need stuff, she's going to find it for you.
Good.
I think that's it on my my miscellaneous. I just wanted to bring a couple of those up. Do you know if Jessica has any? He doesn't have anything, so we have no eleven o'clock. Did you guys have anything else? You're all good? Mike, did you hear, hear me tell them I told the story? I come down one Friday off my driveway and I got to the bottom of the driveway and here's two county trucks sitting there. And and you know where I live? We're on the, and they, I think it must, I don't know if it's you guys or Wash Dot, kind of build that big gravel. That was you guys that built that? And sitting out there is one of your excavators and I said, that Mike, he came through. They were out there, I I talked to, well, Kathy Gardner, husband. And, yeah, and and he said they, they were working on the culvert down there, which I thought they were probably doing. He said he took out two beaver dams down there. I know, I know, free that up in there. But I just come down there and I thought, look at that, old Mike come through. Anything else, gentlemen?
I don't think so. I'm good.
Okay, tomorrow, on the agenda, we'll elect new officers and we'll just run through and it's good to have you aboard.
Yep.
We'll have a good time. Okay, nothing else, we are adjourned.